Right as I go live. Sorry for the delay, everyone. I was trying to see if maybe by chance Alex might be able to join us today. That still is up in the air, but either way, we are going forward with this. We've got four sessions left by my knowledge, reckoning. May or may not be the case here, but in the meantime, while we wait to see if Alex will join us before we get started. Plans, why don't you tell us where everyone's from so we could get to know everyone who's studying with us? And with that, I'll jump into it. So first thing we're covering today is what our plans in Jira. Now, I really wish we had Alex for this session because this is his bread and butter. He has done talks at. I see you ghost. It is absolutely unacceptable, but. It is the situation and we're, as they say, the show must go on, so we are trying our best here. But as I said, Alex is the expert on plans in Jira. He is giving talks at the conference that last year holds every year. Team 25 on this topic as well as given numerous, numerous live learnings. I am a pill imitation on this particular subject. Then he is, but I'm still going to give our best with the study materials. So what are plans? So plans are basically a way to track and visualize work that's going on on a larger scale than a single project. If you have team A and team B that are trying to coordinate with each other and try and figure out, okay, what are the dependencies between us? What am I waiting on you for? What are you waiting on me for? Are we going to win? What is our critical path? When are we going to get out to a release? Plans are what you want to use. So what are some of the? Why would you do use plans instead of just trying to coordinate everything? Yourself. Well, first thing is they provide a clear way to see the timeline. And again, view that critical path of, okay, these are the events that have to happen in order for me to get to my ultimate goal. They allow you to create different scenarios. So you can say, okay, if this happens or this, we move this around. This is how it's going to change our release date. That's going to change our goals and our resource allocations. And kind of see that. You can make changes in plans or develop your plan and then apply that directly to the. Not going to have a Rob moment. These are going to be work items within your Jira work. And you could create these custom views showing differing colors, groups of work dependencies. You could see a large scope of what's going on with these kind of inter project dependencies. We're going to look at the example here. Steve, a project manager needs to determine if a new feature will be launched on an expected date. You can use data. His team is already entering New Jersey. That's the thing. Plans, use the information. Your team is already putting in Jira. Hopefully. To help you understand for him specifically, if he needs more time or team members. Or maybe to narrow things down and take some things out of scope so that he could hit his target date. So this is kind of what the plan looks like. We see dependencies here now. The important thing to understand, these links that we're showing here, those are your issue links. We may have a mobile Dr. Jira, so he could definitely save me here, but. I see a desk. I don't hear Alex.
I'm working on it. Can you hear me?
We can, we can.
Okay, well, we're getting somewhere.
Yeah, we still only see a desk, but you know, it's an improvement.
I'm setting up my settings.
So guys, you're going to get to see all the background stuff we typically do live.
All right.
So we should be covering the ACP 620 Alex, but we have ghost requesting BTS of Dr. Jira Studios.
Oh man, all right, let's, let's get back upstairs then. Oh boy, let's see if I picked up my, my mess isn't enough. All right, behind the. You all get special, special treatment today. All right, here's the side that nobody gets to see. I got a bunch of books, games. Bunch of Toy Story stuff that nobody ever gets to see because they're up high. All the proprietary information of. What we're going to do with, with the Jira life and ATEC. Then this is Lena's setup on the side, my setup. Extra work, a green giant green screen that I just bought.
Hey, I have that green screen.
Do you have the Excel one? Cause I think I might have gone overboard with.
That is the one I have. No matter how big you got Alex, trust me, you're going to wish you had bigger. We may have lost audio on Alex.
Do you know what I think it is? I think it's my office. It's like paradise caged.
I mean, that could be both great and bad. All right. So Alex, we were talking about plans. And I didn't mention that this is kind of your forte. This is what you're known for. You've even given a talk on plans at team 25, if I remember right.
That is correct.
We just jumped in and talked about kind of what they are, why you'd want to use them. And we're going into the three factors of a plan. And again, this is not my specialty and you know, I'm more of a backend kind of guy. So I'm, I'm kind of reading this route as we go along. So if you have any insights as I'm going along, please, please jump in. All right. So three factors of plan are time, scope and resources. Time being obvious, scoping what you intend to do over the course of the plan. What is it you tend, what features you tend to release if you're doing software projects? Or what goals are you hoping to hit? That's your scope. And resources, this is going to sound terrible, but these are your people. These are the thing. Who's actually doing the work to achieve the goal? So you need to keep all three of these minds when you're going through your plan. We go navigate in our plan. I said, I've seen Alex do this probably five or six times. I still struggle sometimes with it. But this first section over here is your work items. This is where you're going to see your epics and your stories. Or if you have a higher initiative set up within Jira, you're going to see those in line with your epics and stories. Two is the filter is going to allow you to reduce what you see to just what you want to see. If you're trying to see a specific subset of work or what's going on, you're going to use the filter for that. Three, the different fields you can show, they kind of have the defaults here, start date and due date, which again. If you have due date, you only need one due date. Do not be that your admin or project game and they request multiple due dates. I will haunt you. So different fields that you could want to display. And then number. Number four, the plan navigation that shows you different parts of plan, the different views you have of it, who's involved, all the fun things. But number five, this is probably the most important part. This is your timeline view. I think we may be having a second Dr. Jared joining us.
I don't even know how that happened.
I'm just going to roll with it. I there.
I'm trying to find the spot in my house where I have it turn the internet because I can't get it everywhere.
Okay, ghost has a comment here. I need a delivery date and expected due date, expect a funding date, a start date, my birthday tracked in every year and my birthday tracked in every year or work item. Ghost.
That one started off as a valid question.
I will haunt you.
That started off, that started off as a valid question, but quickly became a joke.
I think that was the whole point because I just finished admonishing them on due dates and how. Don't be the guy requesting multiple due date fields because I will haunt them. Because they'd call me on my bluff and I will haunt a ghost. But we were just talking about timelines, how this is probably the most important view you'll get because this is how you see. The only when the work will be done, but you can see those dependency links, which will allow you to figure out what is my critical path. And the whole plan of what I'm waiting for, what is the thing that has to happen in order for me to get to the goal? Cause that usually tells you the absolute earliest you'll be able to finish a project.
Yeah. That is what I have here is keep in mind your dates can be figured, so you don't have to use it. To drive the rectangles on the graph.
I got some interference with that, so I imagine everyone else did too, but basically what he's saying is the dates are flexible here. So let me go back up. What you see here on the graph does not have to equal what is the due date. You have some flexibility here or the start date. You have some flexibility moving.
There's a tiny little D on the field that indicates which one is the, which ones are the two date fields that are used.
Yes. So you use a different set of date fields for the, for the plan, for the chart on the plan. But again, if you create multiple due dates, I will haunt you. So just because you can, doesn't mean you should. I'm sorry, Alex, you have your pet peeve with changing name statuses. I have my own pet peeves. There's a reason I don't normally teach this course. Okay. So question number one for us. Oh, we got a comment real quick. I want to highlight, hey guys, I'm currently studying the ACP 120 with your recorded content. Thanks a lot for great content like these and have a good stream. Thank you, Onari. That is great to hear. If you do pass, definitely let us know. We love celebrating these wins with you. All right. So match the Jira input to the planning factor it represents. And did they do this to us again, Alex? Cause this looks like it just goes right across. Alex, if you want to start, jump off and just watch on the YouTube, that's fine. But. We're going to make this work. So that's our first plan complete or first, what is a plan? Now we're going to talk about how you create a plan. And by the end of the lesson, we'll be able to create a simple plan, create work items in the plan. Scribe how to plan that interacts with teams. Now Alex has a whole Jira instance for this kind of stuff that's already set up with stuff we can show in real time. As I said, this is the reason why I'm not looking forward to this alone, but as we said, the show must go on. So I'll talk about how to do this on the training, but I will not be able to show you the way Alex would have been able to. So to create a plan here, you need to have the project boards, filters that include the work or team members. You want to plan work for. So I would, especially if you're on agile pay specialist in the boards, that's going to be the main way you filter. We have an Alex, maybe question mark. Let's see what area in the house he's in now. While he's up, we'll continue working. So to create a plan here in the sidebar next to plans, click create plans represented with the plus icon. I hear echoes. He is in the stairwell now. Maybe. Enter the name for your plan, create access by selecting private or open. This is what it says it is. You can, if it's a private filter, include other people in on it. But if you click open, when you're trying to select the access. It opens it to everyone. If this is your top secret project, this is the last thing you want to click. But it is an option and for most plans, I'd say it's probably the preferred option. Just, we've all seen those top sneaky ones in companies where it's absolutely has to be kept secret. So once you have.
I would also add, I don't know if you covered this.
Go ahead.
I would add that. Your project permissions dictate or trump this open or closed.
Good call. Good point. It doesn't matter if you can't see the plan or not, if you can't see the underlying data, the best you're going to see is a blank plan. So you have to keep in mind, when you have an open plan, can people see, do they have the browse project permission as well as? The work permission because that trumps almost everything when it comes to accessing issues with them project. So once you have your plan, you add your work to it, either using a project board or filter. I'm going to be honest, most time when I'm creating a plan, I usually either use a project or board. I know we can use filters. It's just usually that's a less efficient way because the board is usually already set on a filter. So having a separate filter from the board doesn't really make much sense. The board is already where people are doing work, especially in an agile environment. So most time I'd say about 75% of the time when I do a new plan, I do a board. About 20% of the time I do a project and then only about 5% of the time do I use a filter. You can add more work beyond those, like if you have dependency outside yours, you could add those you want. Create, you click create. Once you have your plan created. Once you create a plan next to the plan name, click more actions than plan settings to make changes. What are some changes you can make? First change you make is work item sources. If you have to add extra dependencies outside your team or extra work. That may be outside of board or whatever you've already configured. Again, this is a great way, why you add a board or project as your basis. You can do that in here. Again, this is an old safeguard, but it's still very relevant. You cannot have more than 5,000 work items, 100 projects, 50 shared teams on a single plan. If you do that, not all of them will show up. Exclusion rules. Let's say there's a specific subset of work within your board that you do not want to have included. Classic example I've used are buckets where we don't know what the work is. We know we have some measure work that will be covered under this unknown bucket. We just create a bucket work item in our sprint that has set number hours of people just pull from them as this unexpected work comes up. I don't want those in my plans, so I usually have an exclusion rule for those. The next setting is permissions. You can, this is important, especially when you have set a private plan. You could grant, view and edit to specific users and groups or all plan users. This is important because I have seen this. Again, I've been on Jira for a long time, so I've seen the way things used to be where private really meant private. And you have to share it or it doesn't exist for anyone else. And I've seen people who had private filters and boards. Who left an organization, we lost all visibility on those things could not. To edit the user to be able to see them again, let alone be able to do anything with them. We would have to go into the database to make changes. Not ideal. I'm glad Jared data center has moved away from that. And this is, to my knowledge, not been a problem cloud for a long, long time. But you still want that continuity of work if you were to leave the organization. So you want to be sure that enough people could see your plan that it's useful. But more importantly, there's someone who could edit it. So if you have to leave for whatever reason, the plan is not lost and they don't have to sit there and try and create another one. So adding data to plans, you can create work directly in your plan if you need to add information while you're planning. You only add work on to projects associated with your plan. This is important. This is how I've seen plans used a lot by project managers is a place where they're creating that bulk work. Trying to figure out what is going on with their project. So to create work items, first we go to the top of the list. We click add, we click the project and then we click the work item type, not the I work type. Ghost, that's why I was saying this is something we could also change on DC now as well as cloud. It was not always the case where we could change the owners of filter plans and dashboards. It used to be a problem Jira wide, all forms of Jira. It is not anymore. And that is one of the best changes ever made because it used to be a massive hassle. Back on track here. So at the top, we could create the project, select the work item. Then we can change value multiple work on the same time using bulk actions. This is kind of outside the scope, but. This is why you can only add work items to projects that are in the project or in the plan. Now, this is a huge point. I want to emphasize while you're adding items or making changes to items in the plan. It is not live. It kind of goes into a buffer state. Where you could see it on your plan. You can see the work items, but it won't have an issue key. It won't exist quite yet. It'll just kind of be there and it'll have like a yellow triangle. If you make a change to existing work item, it'll have that yellow triangle kind of shown right here. And. This is the note, this work is not saved yet. You actually have to go in after you do stuff. And make these changes. By clicking save work. So. When you make changes, the unsafe button will appear at the top right corner of your timeline. If you click, you'll see all the changes you've made, but not yet saved to Jared. For example, for this one, they have changes to mobile two, mobile three. Where they're changing the status of both these, these are unsaved. So they're showing as these new states on the plan. But if you were to look up these Jira items before you save changes, they would still be in to do. Saving changes actually goes through and saves these out to the issue. So people can see. What this in their Jira items. Now, the opposite is not true. If people make changes to the Jira work item. That will instantly reflect in the plan. So it's only outward changes that have the safe buffer for your plans. Okay. Comparing plans and company managed and team managed project now, this is going to be something I know nothing about because I have not really worked with plans in a team managed project. To the extent I could help, but I haven't worked with team managed projects. There is some times where it's needed, but. TGL's official stance is we do not approve of. Team managed projects. So company perhaps you manage projects, you use the full functionality of plans, but team as projects have several. They say small differences. I guarantee once we get into here, they're not going to be small differences. The first one, can't you use custom fields created in the team managed project? In plans, use global custom fields created by your admins, but if you have a project specific. Custom field in your team managed project, which is one of the things that make team managed projects so powerful. And attractive to certain teams. You can't use that in your plans. That's. Again, I called it, it didn't even have to get past number one here. Where they say it's a small difference and it's not really small difference. That would. If I was managing a team managed project, that would really upset me that I can't use my own custom fields within a plan. Work items and team as projects can only have a parent epic from the same project and they can't use hierarchy levels above epics. Again, talking about the olden times in Jira. Up until very recently, you say within the last couple of years. Jira had a strict hierarchy of epic story, subtask or epic task, subtask. You could not get beyond that three layer limit. There were some add-ons that let you kind of fake it, structure being the ultimate example, but. Even then in plans, it did not respect wherever you had set up a structure. So within team managed projects, you still are stuck on that three tier structure of epic story, subtask. And that's if you even allow subtasks, which some teams don't. Again, another big thing difference that Elasian is saying is not so big. That would. Really upset me if I was working on a plan on team managed projects. You can't use statuses and work types created in team managed projects. I'm going to be honest, what's the even point of using plans in a team managed project with these three restrictions? But let's understand that again, keep this in mind because team managed project questions will show up on the ACP 620. I know for a fact they were on the ACP 120. I know we have Onar studying for that. So we need to keep these things in mind when it comes to team managed projects, but. If I was advising a team using team managed projects, I'd be like, let's convert you to a company managed project and let you use plans after that conversion. Adding users to plan. So in plans, a team represents a group of individuals working together on a specific organizational task. Alex, I don't know if you're still listening, but if you are, can you provide clarification? When they highlight the word team and bolded and everything, do they mean? Team as in the team field, which is the organization level field that kind of gets used in everything and gave you a headache one day? Or is this lowercase team something specific to a plan? So let's work on the assumption it's something individual to the plan and doesn't bring in the larger capital T team field. So a group of angels will work together on specific organizational task, project or initiative. Teams are used to organize and allocate resource, track work and manage capacity in the plan. All that has to say, a team is a group of people working towards a common goal. You can add and ah, here it is, Elasian team or create a new one. This implies that it's using the capital T team field. And. Cagri, thank you so much for the lowdown here. It is using the capital T team field. Which again, this is important or reason why I ask this important distinction is once you set up a team within it. It's an organizational level change. It's not, so it's not only impacting your Jira instance. It goes step back and if you're. Your organization has multiple Jira instances in its cloud environment. That team is now visible on all of them. That team is now visible on all of them. I know Alex has had it out with the lasting about this change because that used to not be the case. It used to be a Jera level setting. And when it switched to an org level setting, he actually messed up a bunch of his settings within Jero. Um because he was heavily reliant on that team field. Um but as long as you work with that understanding that once you create a team for your plan. The team is available on any Jera instance within your organization. It's easy to work around. You just got to know that from the start. If I just read the next sentence, you could either create a new at lasting wide team or create a plan only team that won't be a part. Won't be available outside your plan. You can't implement changes made in plans like work assignment if you use a plan only team. You can convert a plan only team to a lasting team. See the elastic documentation. I want to click that. So yeah, you can use a plan only team, which would be the lowercase T team I was talking about, but. It makes the plan kind of useless. So why would you do that? Again, this is my problem because I've been using plants. Or attempting to use them since they were called portfolio in Jira server. So a number of years now. I've never fully been able to get them to work how I wanted them to because. Again, this is my view. Take it with a massive grain of salt, but it felt like. If you didn't work exactly how at last Ian thought you should. These things are very difficult to use and implement. If you want to work exactly how it last year wants you to work, which I guess they're calling the system work now. That's great. They work great and more power to you. But if you want to do any sort of deviation. They get very tricky to use in this is one of those examples where maybe I don't want to use it in the lastian wide and org wide team. I just wanted to give plan. Well, then I can't really use plans because I can't update. The um plan or implement changes made in the plan. So create a team for your plan. You give plan navigation, you click teams, you add a team, you create. The new team name, kind of fill out all that, who's on the team, all that. And then you can select plan only or available across organization. Now, when they see organization again, keep in mind, this means every Jira instance. I think it comes into play in Jira line as well, or it may come into play there. But everything attached to your org has access to this team now, once it's available across organization. Name the team, add members and click create. Alright, configure a planning style for your team. When you add a team to your plan, you select the planning style for them determines how plan estimates and schedules work. Again, we got the two flavors fragile here Scrum and Kanban. For Kanban teams, you configure how many hours of work your team completes in a single week. Once you configure that, it'll go through and figure out, and this is where the power of team or plans really makes itself known. Is once you have that average work completed per week. Um the plan is able to look at your um board's backlog and go, okay, for the entire board, if things are scheduled. If you have your um things ranked properly and we schedule them out. It'll take you X number of weeks to complete the um backlog. Scrum teams, you configure how many weeks are in each sprint and how many hours a week the team works. Plan estimates your work in store points. You can only use a scrum team, or if your plan estimates work is store points, you only use scrum team. I would say this is the better use for plans using story points. Because it allows you to estimate that workout and a little bit more accurate. We're terrible at speaking things time wise. Um so if you're using store points, it's a little bit better and I find. So you tell them how many hours a week, how many um. How many weeks are in your sprint? So it can figure out how long, how many sprints are out. And if you have any teams members out, how that impacts your sprint performance. But it's also using the velocity of your scrum teams going back however many weeks. So you could go, okay, this is my backlog. This is my velocity over the past few weeks. This is how many sprints given that average velocity and the backlog will take complete, complete backlog as it exists now. And I'll even take a stab at configure um putting stuff in sprint so you can kind of see how that'll work out. So that's where plans become really powerful. That's why I don't want things I advocate for them. But they're um interesting to work with. So two questions. Kika is creating a plan and needs to create a team. She's on the development team consistently works in same projects, but doesn't yet have an lastian team. So they don't have the full org level team. She wants to be able to create work items within the plan and use them in an existing project board. What's the best type for her to um? Best type of team. Yeah, best team type for her to create. So let's look at the context. Let's read it as if this was an actual exam. So we know um. Team development team consistently works the same projects, but doesn't yet have any lasting team. She wants to be able to create work items within the plan. And use them in existing project board. So she is creating a work in the plan and then needs to implement it. This tell me that the plan only team would not work for her because again, once you click plan only team. You will not be able to implement work. So this one has to be the Alaskan team. Jensen is creating a quarterly plan for his department. Teams in his department use several different projects tracked to work. Jensen includes all of them in his plan. Jensen then creates an exclusion rule to remove all work items within on hold status from the plan. You know, some of the work items with this status still appear. What could be causing this? So we know. The exclusion role is in place. It's kind of blanket with anything in the status gets rejected, but he's still seeing some items. So Jensen is using multiple company managed projects in his plans. We see no mention of company or um team managed project here, so we can't assume in one or the other. Jensen using global custom field for his um exclusion rule. Well, that would not be a problem. But we know status is a global, it's not custom field, it's built in. Field kind of. Jensen is choosing team manage projects in his plan. Jensen is using signees in his exclusion role. So we know D is not it. We know um C is not it. Or we don't know if C, C is possible. We know B is not it because he's not using a global custom field. He uses multiple company managed projects in his plan. So he is using multiple different projects to track their work. I'm going to say. Yeah, I feel like it's C as well. Um I'm trying to narrow it down. Why though? You know what? Let's have them tell us why. Ah, see, did she use a team as project as planned? Team as project don't use the same status as it's company managed projects. So. Again, this feels like one of those things specifically with team managed projects that's going to give you a headache. Their statuses are not the same as a global one. So you put in um. Yes, um because this is something we found multiple times with the study session. Um is some of these questions are very open ended. We're hoping. Um that when we take the test is not going to be like that. We don't know. So I think we have one more lesson we could do um within this um study session and then. Alex should have his um internet sorted out by the end of the day. So next Tuesday, next Thursday. Day after tomorrow, we should be good for our next um lesson. But let's complete this one and then we'll um talk, probably call it a stream. So automatically schedule work with plans Jira. This is where I talked about where if you put in your scrum team. Or a Kanban team and you put in hours and everything appropriately. Jerica plans could take a look at your backlog and figure out how things should look moving forward. So. In this lesson, we'll be able to use the auto schedule for plans, predict how data changes will affect that schedule. In plans, the off scheduler takes the configured scope and resources in a plan to recommend a schedule. You can modify and recommends, you can modify the recommend schedule as needed or implement it exactly as is. So to auto schedule work in timeline view, you can, you um. You can click schedule work based on estimates represented by a calendar icon. If we look here, that's the plus symbol with calendar. On your timeline view. Choose override all values in sprint release and team fields or only empty values. So if you already have stuff planned out for sprints, you can say, don't overwrite my sprints or releases whatever. Just stuff that isn't scheduled yet, put out into future sprints. Click preview results and then click accept changes unless you want to make changes. Again, this is one of the key superpowers of plans that make them so attractive. If you have a backlog, you've already gone through and done the hard work of grooming that backlog and estimating to work out. You this can then figure out what your sprints look like going forward. When not scheduled to work, Jared considers several factors to create ideas to schedule for your team. First one is how your teams estimate work like story point days or hours. Whether your team works in sprint iteration or a continuous flow of daily tasks, this is your scrum or your Kanban. The sprints that work um in your plan. Sprints that work in your plan is assigned to. Ranking of the work items in the backlog dependencies between work items in the backlog. And sequence of work items based on start dates and due dates. So it will, plans will try and respect your start dates and due dates if that's fields you have configured. Note here, you can change which date your fields plans use to start and end date. This is what me and Alex were talking about earlier in the lesson. You also configure several other settings to ensure the scheduler has all the information you need. Click tab to see what you should configure. You can set the estimation unit to either days, hours or story points. This unit should be the same as the estimation used on the boards. And projects your plan includes. Set the estimate, go to plan settings in sidebar, click scheduling, underestimate, pick the unit. Again, hours and days are great, but we're terrible as species at estimating time. So this is one reason I prefer story points, especially if you're going to be using these plans. Sprint length. If you use scrum teams in your plans, you set a sprint length. For your teams, Ken bands don't have a sprint length because they don't have sprints. You go to set it, you go to teams, more actions and team settings. And sprint length field enter the number of weeks each sprint is for that team. And then click done. Now sprints are usually done in even iterations of weeks. Um. If you're mad, you could do a sprint each week. I would not recommend that. Two weeks seems to be the sweet spot. One week you're doing too much in all the ceremonies each week with the retros and spring planning and all that. Two weeks is kind of that perfect balance. Three weeks, things change too much between sprints. Planning session. So you don't, you feel pulled around a lot with a three week sprint. Capacity, configure a capacity for each team in your plan, including Scrum and Kanban teams. Set the capacity, you go to um plan navigation, click teams. Click more actions and team settings and the capacity field enter the total number of hours a team works each week and number of. Total number of points they complete in a sprint. Field will indicate whether you should enter points or hours, then click done. That feels different because it used to take your average velocity. And maybe if I pull it up, it'll allow you to enter your average velocity or it'll tell you what the average velocity is and ask if your number is realistic. Um auto scheduler will schedule work items that don't have a start point or time estimates to last. Lasting entirety of their assigned sprint or version. So how does the auto, we understand what the auto scheduler does, how does it impact data? So the auto scheduler won't accept, won't change anything until you accept changes it proposes. Even then, it will only impact date as appears in the plan, not the rest of Jira. Again, this is saying, even if you accept the auto, auto schedulers um. Kind of viewpoint on how things should be defined on the different sprints or future work. It will not change anything in Jira. It'll count as unsafe change in the plan, which we were talking about in the last um lesson. Will not add, does not actually reflect in Jira until you save those changes. When you auto schedule, you can figure whether the schedule will override field values and work. You can override all values or only empty values. Again, we were just talking about this. For example, a work item assigned sprint one when it was first created in Jira. Based on the values of all the other work, I'll schedule is determined that work item should be moved to sprint two. It's dependent on something that's in sprint one and won't be able to get done. If the auto scheduler permission to override existing sprint values, it will move that to sprint two. If you have not given the auto scheduler override permission, it will leave in sprint one and probably just tell you there's a dependency conflict here. You can add the sprint release and team fields to your timeline to better view. Better understand the proposed schedule. To do so, click field section header and then schedule. Um for and add these fields. Alright, something I gotta deal with. Alright, let's explore an example. Rama has used the auto scheduler for his um. Plan, the proposed schedule is great, but Rama wants to change a few things. First, Rama accepts all the changes proposed by our scheduling to the plan. Since the schedule is mostly correct, it's easier to modify the few changes in the plan rather than discard the plan, the auto schedule entirely. If I can indicate what auto scheduler has changed, make it easy for Rama to identify what he needs to review. Rama will click accept. This is the accept changes right here. To accept the auto scheduler into his plan. Remember, even though Rama has accepted changes planned, he hasn't yet changed anything in Jira. Plans don't impact your Jira light data unless you click unsafe changes and then saves changes into Jira. Again, we have to emphasize this because it cannot be emphasized enough. Plans do not immediately change things in Jira. Now, if you think change things in Jira, it automatically reflects in the plan, but it doesn't go the other way around. I do want to note something here. Um we had showed the dependency lines. Do you see this one is red versus this one that's blue? Blue is good. It means things are happening in sequence. A red dependency lines means, hey, this item is dependent on this item. But it's starting before this one's even done. Depending on how that dependency works, that might be okay, that might not. You as the um program manager. Typically, you kind of understand how those dependencies work and could make adjustments to that, but. I'm surprised the auto scheduler set it up this way because it usually tries to avoid this kind of dependency complex. Rama makes a few adjustments, dates and durations and schedule. Auto scheduler has placed work item TA eighteen on a light sprint. Rama just found out that the contract to work in on this work item isn't renewing their contract. And needs some finished work item before they leave. So Rama drags work item higher ranking above the others. So Rama tracks work item higher ranking above the others in the plan. He also gets skin and the work item is moved to an earlier sprint. Again, this is the auto scheduler respecting the rank saying, oh, this is a higher priority now. We need to schedule this sooner. Off scheduler is placed work item TA seven on schedule to start on March first, but they need it to start on February tenth. I'm gonna drag spark representing that box item to start on um February tenth. So this is TA seven. This is the um UI UX design. There shouldn't be any conflict with that, moving that. Now Robin wants to implement these changes here. So he clicks unsafe changes, selects changes and then saves them. Typically, if I remember remembering the plans, right, once you don't have to auto click or you don't have to click this top um item here, you could just um, it's automatically selected and then you just don't um. If you want to make changes, you could do that and only want to save subset, but. I do want to note something. Again, we've all worked in Jira for a while. I presume we know that um Jira sends a lot of updates. If you're doing a lot of work in the plans and doing a lot of these savings, it could easily flood people's inbox. So maybe consider unchecking send update notifications till you're doing your final save. So two questions. Let's see what we've learned. L N E issues, use the off schedule and plan that has issues from web app sprint board and let it overwrite all values. When she looks at the backlog for the board, she doesn't see work in sprints. The auto scheduler is recommended. What could be the problem? L N E needs manually input the sprint values. Uh, she needs to save um the plan changes into Jira. She can only use out scheduler for Kanban projects, not Scrum. You can only use um the out scheduler for projects, not individual boards. Well, we know both C and D are not true, just outright. Plans would suck entirely if A were true. So the answer should be B. As it is. Arvo is creating a plan for a Kanban team. Once you use the auto scheduler, what data will the auto scheduler use? Now, this is a question format that we'll see on occasion within the ACP exams. We will not see it as often as we used to. That's because these are a pain. You have to select multiple answers and if even one of your multiple answers is off, you do not get partial credit. You just get nothing. So this is an all or nothing question with multiple answers you have to get right. So what data will the auto scheduler use? Well, the auto, it will use the estimation unit because it'll try and pick between um the um days or hours for a Kanban board. Sprint length does not exist for um Kanban, so we don't worry about that. Ranking and capacity. Alright, I think we got pretty far on this one to find dependencies between work and plans in Jira. Um, we'll start on that. We'll probably have Alex go over a few points if he um catches up on this. But thank you for putting up with me. Thank you for um joining us with these lessons. Um. We're in the tail end of this thing. I think we'll get pretty far here. Um, with the next couple of streams and then we'll be talking our general test tips again. But until next Thursday, see you next time.